Is everybody ready? Help the City of Vernon Workshop Monday, Friday, and Saturday.
Helen Lee Fox, thank you for being here tonight. Everyone getting here safely. We ask that you will guide the council, help our community, lead this council to make the right decisions for our city and town. Keep us all safe and heal our country in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number one, updates around the work.
So I got two things really just before me. Alright, so every year we have to, we have to get our generator service and the tanks inspected. So we get to the power room every year. So they, to do it yearly, yearly basis is like having it done every year for DEP is we can put it in the budget or I need to give them this year. I know we've done into the new budget, but it's $3,805. I know we can't vote on it tonight, but that way we should all know for the next one. And that's to do all of them and do my inspections and everything.
That's inspection on the generator one?
All the generators we have and the tanks too.
But that's not the company's generator, right?
That one there, they're gonna, when either they come.
Yeah, we need an affidavit for that one.
Yeah, they're gonna do a paper form for insurance.
Don't we have the tank? Doesn't the guy at Chipley do the tanks?
That's more tanks.
Okay, I got you. You're talking about your silver tanks, aren't you?
I'm talking about fuel tanks.
Yeah.
Alright, then the other thing is Monday, next Monday, I'm leaving to go to San Diego State for class for a week, so I won't be here. And we'll still talk about it. I'll be back Friday.
What is the class?
It's for more of us.
Jason, can y'all raise now?
Yeah, yeah, I can tell you that too. Me and Jimmy's been working every weekend, last two weekends, on the plant, so we got it kind of rolling good now, so.
Are your belts printed up?
Yep, we got it rolling.
Did they replace all the electrical?
Well, they haven't done that part yet. We got it running, but they haven't done that, the part we voted on.
Do we know when that's gonna be done?
No, Jimmy couldn't come tonight, so. But I'll find out before the next meeting, that's all I know. It was already running, it just, it was, you have to babysit. You have to be there all day with it. You can't leave it, so.
But that part's fixed.
But yeah, I mean.
So Candace put that on the agenda that we voted on for our next meeting, please? You said 3805, Ross?
Yeah, it's thirty.
I think we already have it in the budget.
I think, it probably is, but it's 3805, that's all.
I think it's on the budget already. And if it is, y'all won't need to put on it, because it's just annual maintenance.
Okay. Alright, then, anything else? Is that all you have to ask?
Yes, ma'am.
Number two, discuss the CBPG and R, which is Wells and Church Street.
And Dale's here for that. They already know about these things.
Oh boy, we need you.
So we opened bids on the 25th, I think that was last Tuesday or Wednesday. We had, we'll do the easy one first. The well project, we had no bids. I think I, I know why we had no bids. I'll circle back around to that in a minute. We opened the Church Street, and for those of you who don't know, we were pretty sure that we were gonna be short money for both. So we have about four, five, $600,000, give or take, to do both of those projects. So I split the well project into a bunch of little tiny pieces, hoping that we could have enough money to do at least some of it. And I split the Church Street into two pieces, the south half and the north half. So apparently I split the well into too many pieces, because the contractors were like, you know, we're afraid you're not gonna award anything, so we're just wasting our time, so they didn't bid it. That's what they told me after the fact. The Church Street, we had six bidders, which is great. Unfortunately, they were all way too hot. So we had about, we had about $250,000 from Church Street. The low bidder for the south half was $400,866.
Pretty much double.
Yes. So you still have the $500,000. The problem is, where do you go with it? And that's, I think, you know, what a tough decision you gotta make. In order to do either project, you're gonna have to put all the money together instead of splitting it into 250 for the Church Street or 200 and another 200 or whatever for the well. Put it all together, so you have four, $500,000, $600,000, somewhere in that range to be able to do one of the two projects.
The problem, yeah, sorry, Mr. Gary.
Does that bring us spell out though?
Yeah, so that, that's the next downside of that. The grant, the way it was written, and I haven't read it specifically, but what we talked about after the bid opening was that it's written such that the, you basically set grants up, or the way CBPGs are known, you set them up for priority. So first priority was the well project, mainly because it serves the entire community. Everybody drinks, all the water mixes together, everybody drinks out of the wells. So you get, you get basically the benefit of having the full community. Whereas Church Street, in second position, only serves the people that live on Church Street. Even though I know you're gonna say that plenty of people use that to cut through.
Did you?
But it's a little harder to pin that down, you know? And certainly you can't pin it down to the entire community. So in order to, if you were to say, let's switch all the money to Church Street and build at least the south half of it, I don't know that you could do that through the grant. And you may have actually had a confirmation that you can, but.
Oh, we can't. I did talk to grant administrator, and they go by the amount of beneficiaries. And so the entire town is a beneficiary of the wells getting fixed, where the way the Florida Commerce looks at it is like aid houses and the church is a benefit of Church Street getting fixed. And it doesn't matter if 10,000 people use that road. It's only the city limits, because the city is the one that, is the one that's getting the grant for it. So Florida Commerce will not allow us to transfer money from wells to the Church Street project. We can only ask for an amendment to transfer from the Church Street project to the wells.
And this is wells one and two that we've been dealing with?
And well two is completely down.
No, it's not the one.
Oh, y'all got it going?
We gotta go.
So more than likely, even if you transfer all the money, you won't be able to do everything at well one and two. But I think we prioritize them such that you can do big chunks. The first chunk being the electrical, which is probably the biggest thing.
That's what the problem was.
Yeah.
And we got it fixed. By luck.
Yeah. Yeah, still need to do a lot more work there. So I think what we'd be looking for at the next meeting is we ought to vote, you know, basically consolidate all the money into one. Then we rebid well number one and well number two. Hopefully get some numbers that we can work with, even if it's broken into pieces and award it to somebody who can't get that worked on.
And one would be the next chance, so just to put in for a bid.
There's really, there's really no.
Something for Church Street to be done, possibly.
Yeah, well, so, alright, so let's, let's assume next, I'll address that in two different ways. So assume we, next, at your next meeting, two weeks from now, whatever, you vote to move all the money to Church, or to the wells. We can turn around and bid that right then, and within a month and a half, award it theoretically, assuming we get numbers. Still have Church Street floating around. This week, I will be turning in what's called an MSCOP grant. I forget what MSCOP stands for, but it's a DOT grant for paving. Same thing to pave for the well project. And one of, we're doing three of them, three different roads, but I think we'll turn in our, correct me if I'm wrong, our first priority will be Church Street. So that'll, hopefully, we would get awarded that, and then you'd be able to build Church Street. Now that we have good numbers, at least, we know what kind of money we're talking about. And we do it, you know, for the whole, we probably still bid it in two pieces, just because it's set up that way, just to be safe. But we, you know, theoretically, we'd ask for enough money for the whole thing.
And then MSCOP will not go over 850,000. And all of our, all of our bids are over 850 now. It'll be three to four years, so it'll realistically be over a million. So the wording on that would, on the MSCOP is very important on how the grant is submitted.
Because it's gonna take two to three years.
Because if they see that it goes over 850, we're disqualified right there. That, then they wipe us out.
And we're still talking about how if we were awarded, it's still gonna take?
Right.
Three to four years.
Because this one for Yellow Jacket Drive, when the paperwork came in, we started actually working on it. I signed it in 2021, when, from there.
We might go a little quicker, because we don't have to do any design over there or permitting. It's done. I mean, really, all we have to do is the money, once the money comes in, you know, you turn it in next week or the end of this week, it's gonna take a few months for it to work through and get approved. Once it gets approved, it takes another month or so before the agreement gets worked out. So you're, you're six, eight months down the road before the money is actually available to spend. But the good thing is, we'd be able to go straight to construction. We don't have to go through designs.
But they won't award them until December.
Oh, well, there you go. Yeah, okay. So you'd look, you'd be looking at this time next year, when you'd be able to construct it. Other than that, there's not a whole lot of grants, unfortunately, for roadwork. The next thing you could do would be another CBPG, which I think y'all have another cycle coming around, which you might be able to do. Again, that's, we have to kind of discuss that with Mr. Fox and his group to see what's eligible and whether that would be eligible. Again, the good thing is, the design is 100% done, and it's not gonna change unless something drastic changes on that road. And you have six bidders, all of which were clumped generally together. I think the lowest, like I said, 400,000, the high was about 450, for the first phase, like seven phases. So they're all kind of there together. It makes you feel good, at least you have good numbers. What else? Other questions?
I think we can pretty much explain it. I'm assuming that we're all in agreement.
I think the only way you can do it is that.
The wells have gotta be fixed, you know?
Yeah, I mean, if the wells support the whole town, there's no other way around it.
No.
Again, the wells went out.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I mean, it makes more sense anyway.
So we'll add it to the next agenda to be voted on, and.
Do we need to talk about the other one too, while I'm here? I don't know if that's on your agenda, it's in your agenda.
Go ahead, Ryan.
It's a workshop, so.
Okay, alright, so the third project we bid was the generator project, which included the generators at each lift stations, the skater system at each of the lift stations, and then it also included a little bit of Fortuna work over here on Dawkins to get that Fortuna out of that shallow manhole and down into a deeper manhole. We had one bid on that project. Not exactly sure why we only had one bid. I guess what I'm hearing is that, since it's a weird project for, it's more of an electrical project, because it's mostly generators and skater, but electrical guys still need a utility guy to do this Fortuna, so trying to find themselves teaming up with folks was a little weird, at least for the bidders. We did not open that one bid that we got, sent it back to them unopened. The theory behind that was, we knew we were gonna bid it, we're gonna have to rebid it, because this, the state's gonna make us rebid it, which they did. We sent it back to them unopened, then it's not public knowledge, and theoretically, they don't have to mess with it when they resubmit it. Because what typically happens when you rebid a project, you bid it for a dollar on day one, it's gonna be $2 next time you bid it, just the way it always works. So the thought was, if we don't open it, maybe it won't go up, or if it won't go up significantly. Or if it does, we won't know, because we didn't open it in the first place. So. So that, so we are rebidding. We'll be a little more aggressive in trying to find, you know, at least two bidders. But I think Candace has already put it into the newspaper, and it'll be, it'll be advertised on Sunday week, right, the night? No, this Sunday, sorry. This is coming Sunday, on the night.
And Florida Commerce said that that was the right process, was that we didn't open it, and if we only get one bidder the next time, then we just send that letter that we only got one bidder.
Yeah, no, except in the second time, I think.
The second time, but you have to do it twice every time, if, you know.
So right now, it's scheduled to open on April 24th. So by then, hopefully, we'll have a couple more bidders, and we'll, you know, see what happens. The budget for that should be more than adequate. We have, we've got 10, 10 lift station sites, three of which are deadesments that are still kind of up in the air, haven't been, so. But I got it split out into each individual generator site, so, you know, depending on where the money is, you'll do some of them if you can't do all of them, so.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Dale?
Where are we at on the set of this station? You can tell them all now, while we're sitting, while you're sitting here.
Set of this station is moving, albeit slowly. I've been, I lost one of my guys at the office going to work bigger and better things, I guess. So with him leaving, he was working on it, so that kind of puts it back into my box. So I'm trying to get it worked out. So I hope to submit to the county as soon as possible. It's close, I just gotta get it done. You know, submit to the county, get the county to approve it, and then we'll permit it to DEP at the same time for, and then theoretically, it'll all come together, and we'll bid it. I, you know, I think I was trying to, I was targeting previously, before he announced his departure, I was trying to have it done by the end of the year. I'm thinking another couple months probably before I can get out the door, so. And I apologize for that. And then the third, the other project has to do with wastewater treatment plant. And that one is in the grant administrator, Mr. Fox's hands. They're doing their environmental stuff on that. Once they get done with their environmental, they'll turn, and it gets approved by the state, they'll turn us loose to actually start designing. And then me and Jimmy and Jason and probably the electrical engineer will go walk around the plant, come up with a plan for what all we need to do in relative to what all we had listed and we initially applied, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Dale. We appreciate it.
Mm-hmm, no problem.
Does anybody else have anything?
Yeah, we got Jason and Shaq here. Where are we at on fire hydrants?
How much far?
We can't test them. We can. So they need to be tested at some point in time. I had someone give them a quote a couple weeks ago, I think, for them to be tested for Southeast Managerial Services, come out and test them, at least. I said we were painting them, the fire department are painting them, but. Hard as testing, they're gonna be tested. So we got our paperwork ready when I said we'd come down.
Where are you at, Jason, on?
At the plant right now. Last of my worries right now. I just got two that's down right now.
Got what?
Two that's down right now.
Still not locking the gate behind the plant. Line open. Lift station gates ain't locked.
What lift station gate?
One on Main, Main Street out here.
The reason why that is unlocked, is we've been at it the whole time. That's the one Pike's been dealing with right there.
Okay, good question. There's some little stuff.
Is that how you do it, Mr. Gary?
Yeah.
Does anybody else have anything? Why ask Shaq?
I think that she wanted to go first.
Okay. Look, I asked, we need to get safety.
Well, I didn't know if I could, I'm working on these workshop things, but yes, I just wanted to, I, sorry, I missed the last meeting. Y'all probably heard about my friend, I was a mentor of them. But I did get the quotes from the ones that do the state contract and government things around here, for like the side-by-sides and stuff for government entities. And I just wanted to hand you to. There's one for the John Deere, the side-by-side at Kabota and Kawasaki. Which is what majority of everybody around here uses, is of course, the John Deere Gator. And it wouldn't come out of the wreck, and they do a lot of damage, and. So I just asked them, y'all think about that? And then if at any time it goes wreck, couldn't pay it, it couldn't go to the guys or whatever.
No, the guys will get it.
But we would definitely keep it out of the ballpark, and it would be under lock and key up there, like the, what's that thing called?
This is something, though, that we need to vote on fairly quickly, ball season and stuff starting to.
That's another thing I was gonna tell y'all. Opening date, we normally do it the first Saturday of April, but we're doing the bicentennial thing here, so I'm pushing it back to April the 12th, which will be the next Saturday. We will start playing games before then, but I mean, it's a bicentennial event. And I've, we, I had the district meeting yesterday, so we did all of our game schedules and everything. I have all that. I'm rolling out teams to the coaches as I get them finalized and everything. I've been calling kids that didn't make the team. However, we didn't have coaches, or we were like six or seven kids prior to making the team. It just didn't work out. Basketball championships have started tonight, and then we have the last one on Friday night. And that's about it.
Better number turnout of kids this year than last year?
It's about the same. I think we had like, maybe 12 more kids this year. We had a lot more, like, older age groups this year than we did last year. Last year, we had a lot of T-ball, we've also, like, they've come up, and so. I mean, it's been, it's been about the same, but it's gonna be exciting. Absolutely, it's gonna come out like the game.
And the Easter, we were talking about the Easter event on April 19th. That's the Saturday before Easter.
If that's okay with y'all?
East State, I'll probably do it 10 to 2, like we did last time.
10 to 2?
And that's April 19th? And just out of curiosity, out of these three places, do you have a preference?
Um, I, honestly, the John Deere is what pretty much everybody, even Bay County, that's who they pretty much use for their parks and everything. Chipley uses John Deere. I don't, I did not reach out to Bonifatise, so. I'm good with John Deere and beer equipment. They were really, really nice. I mean, like.
They're a good dealer.
He, and he told us that anytime if we decided to go with him, the company needed maintenance or whatever, we'd take it to them. They would do what they could there. If not, they would get a specialist to come in. You know, he went through the whole, the Kabota was through. It used to be Sewell, but now it's Crystal something Tractor there in Lynn Haven. And they were nice, but like, I don't know if it's just because I was used to, like, Sewell opening it, it's a little different. And then the Kawasaki, mules are good. I just, I don't know really much about Kawasaki. I just wanted y'all to have a pretty good think, you know? But.
Probably the least expensive to work on would probably be the.
John Deere, probably.
Probably better to get the parts and stuff, too.
Beer equipment's easy.
I've been to Sewell several times, and it's like, they seem to not have what you need.
Yeah. And like I said, it's, I'm, whatever, if y'all let me do it, like, let the work department do it, then I'm up to y'all. But if I had to choose, I would choose the cheap one, the John Deere. Just because, like I said, I've talked to some Parks and Recations and stuff, and that's what they use.
So we've been on the agenda for our next meeting? So, yeah. Thank you, Miss Dink.
Thank y'all.
Chakon?
Just go in, have a drink.
I found that quote for Mr. Gary for the hydrants. That quote was $5,575 for our company to come in.
The one from there?
$5,575 for them to come in, do the annual maintenance, and then the hydrant flow test.
Is that a yearly top 100?
Yes, annually, we'll be done annually.
Can you add to the quote to fix the two hydrants?
So they, we are actually not, of course, they can't fix them.
Yeah, we don't have to worry about that. I can do it. I think we reached out to Chipley.
I guess.
Yeah. I think Candace reached out for me.
A couple weeks ago, we're on the NACCO quote. It's got three different ticks on there, but a couple weeks ago, fire department, they guys had a call for possible.
It's the one stapled to your agenda, except for Miss Wynn, has that ever given her hers?
They had a possible structural fire down the road. I want to say it was off traverse. They went and used a thermal to try to find, you know, like hidden fires away, and the whole screen is done, like, can't see off of it no more. Luckily, the fire coordinator was around the corner. He had one in his truck. They used it, found it, found the fire, put it out. But he is allowing us to borrow his right now, to him get one ordered. That quote from NACCO has three different cameras on there. You got the Flir K-53 for $3,000, and $633, and then you got the Flir K-55, $4,088. And then you got the Seek Attack Pro for $2,720. And I wanna say we had one through 10-8 for the same thing for that Attack Pro, but it was $28.50. So we just need to grab at least one of them. Personally, I think the Seek Attack Pro would do us fine for $2,720. At least one for now. We can order a second later when we get more money somewhere, depending on the other truck, but.
So that needs to be put on the agenda, and what is, you said, you said that you'd given Garrett a quote of $5,000 on what?
That's for the hydrants to get tested.
It was a, it was a.
It was on a meeting a couple of hours.
I'm looking at them.
They're wearing.
And they're not buying that $1 on this particular one.
No, he brings all the expenses, but he didn't meet the fire department's expense.
You don't wanna work.
Sir? So I heard from 10-8 today. Before we go to that, the engine failed pump test. So it's gonna have to go to 10-8 at some point in time, find out what's wrong with it. Because we gotta get it past pump test, that way it can keep running. But right now, we're gonna keep running now, because that's all that's over there. Because the tank is at 10-8.
What was the price to fix it?
It's on your, it's right there.
Is that this one?
I guess this one is. We'd go with that one. So when they, initially when it went over there, they kept throwing the stop engine, engine hot codes and stuff. It just alarmed, and it'd go off, alarm would go off. We found out it was the turbo actuator, and some calls of it to replace it. That's on page two in the middle. It's gonna be $2,421.63.
Shaq, what did you just say? How much?
It's $2,400.
$2,000, so it's, so the sheet's broke down.
Yeah, I didn't have my glasses. They're on top of my head, I'm sorry.
It's on page two.
This is the one you just sent us, and I hadn't looked at it yet.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did they just go through this truck and pick out every single thing that was wrong with it?
I told them to find everything that was wrong with it, but, is this, the.
And that's why it's broke down, like?
That's why it's broke down into different categories, jobs. So we can start from the front page, and just go down. The front, starting that PM service, that's annually. We gotta, we gotta get that truck serviced. That's not gonna be in the worst shape. That was $710.12.
So that, that will be a yearly thing, right?
Yes, that PM service is a year, no matter what. It's just pretty much doing oil changes, like you do on your car and stuff like that. The rear brakes, that's at the bottom.
They got the lock there? They went out on the call.
Yes, we went out on the call, and they was like, hey, this, this truck's lagging. It's like sliding. Although we get to the station, park it, but we'll come to find out, one of the brakes on was cracked all the way through. And so he's got it down there. However, if you look at the brake shoes, it says like $1,817.34. He said that was incorrect. It's a little cheaper, it's $1,200, so.
So it's not the eight?
It's not the 1,800, it'll be $1,200. It's not the $1,800, it'll be $1,200.
So roughly five grand.
Twenty-four hundred dollars somewhere in there. But that job altogether for the brake job would be $4,792.40.
$7,920.40.
The next one is the HVAC, the AC has been out, we haven't approved it, but that's $1,500, $1,557.51 to replace it and fix it. And then the check engine, that's that turbo actuator I was telling y'all about, that's And then they found an air leak coming from the seat. Just a valve in there, that's $150.87 to fix it. And then, we got a few lights out of the truck, he said, I think it's light, one rear, turn signal, the front headlight, that was $154.12. And then the gauges on the pump, they're also, well, we knew two of them were shot, but we don't use a dead gun, because we don't have enough water supply. But this, they're out as well, that was $17.46, $48, and then the total amount to fix all of that is $12,747.81.
You got it?
I don't know. Well, we ain't bought our hoses yet, so we should. We got to propose it off next year.
We got to get the fire trucks on the road.
Oh, I do.
So, put it on the agenda, Candace.
Do y'all want it in parts or the whole thing? Can you do it in parts, Shaquon?
So, I have to get one with what stuff you can do in parts, I'm pretty sure.
Wait, can you do the?
Brakes and turbos and the lights.
Imported stuff now.
So the brakes, turbos, lights and gauges, I was saying. And then we can, and then the PM, while it's over there, the service, the annual service is going to get it done also.
That's the whole answer?
Pretty much.
Yeah, we got to have it on the road.
Oh, that's 100% up to y'all.
But other than that, we've been busy with brush fires here lately. We ran three yesterday, went to Sunny Hills, first thing in the morning helped them, and then Bear Bay Lane or Quarter or something like that. And then today we went to Chapel Branch, down Creek Road, off of Creek Road, a brush fire there.
I think.
So the hot, it's, we're not.
We're not supposed to be burning.
Well, we don't, we're not on a burn ban, so.
Washington homes are recommending nobody burn anything.
Because it's a high fire conditions.
Six brush fires in the county yesterday, doesn't it? That I know of.
Yes, ma'am. Lots of airbikes running yesterday.
All right, we got everything on the agenda for the next meeting, but we dealt with the workshop, or is there something else? Anybody have anything else?
I do have something for the Heritage, the Heritage Day Festival.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, first of all, we are going to get a float, I guess, with the members of the council and the mayor. And then I also thought that maybe we need to have some type of shirts, you know what I mean, like a shirt to wear that day.
So we're doing the float?
Well, yes, ma'am.
I asked you, you said there's going to be a float.
Yeah, we are going to do it. Well, I've already talked to Nikki and that we can get together and do the float. We're just going to get some banners or something and get a trail on it.
So.
And then we need to get some type of shirts or something. Now, I would rather see a, like a golf shirt than a tee shirt, because the golf shirt is more professional looking to me than a tee shirt. And we could all get those and get something on the back to let people know who we are at the festival. So, that wouldn't be a lot of money, I don't think. But we could get together on a color and then get our sizes to Candace, but we need to do that right away because the time is winding down for that.
Well, and that, we would need to pay for our own shirts.
Well, we could pay, I could pay.
I would think.
Yeah, but it's okay.
But if you want to come up with a.
No, you guys can pick a color. What color do you guys want?
Who would we use for that? I know several tee shirts, but.
There's some embroidery people in Chipley, I'm pretty sure. So we can get it, you know, so that it's not so not a spring print.
Yeah, not a spring, but something that's nice.
If you put City Vernon, City Council, in your name or not, you can use it for all the events that come up.
Yeah, that's what I said, if we do that.
Kind of professional looking.
Your colors are blue.
I would rather have the colors, like I said, the colors are more professional looking than a tee shirt.
What about blue and orange, Vernon's colors?
Yeah.
No, that's fine.
Color is brown, there's got to be one in blue.
Okay, listen, I'm a, I'm a San Antonio. But I have to wear.
Well, I'm a Gator, so I'm fine with it. I'm fine with the orange and blue.
Okay, so, yeah, we'll come up with something by the next meeting, I guess, and you can offer for us, and I'm sure.
And we started by doing some box fireworks, but we're not sure we can do that yet. We don't know whether we can do that.
I reached out to Heather, she's talking about on Friday night at the.
Well, we was talking about doing it on Saturday, but see, the thing is over at four o'clock. So we were thinking about doing some.
Something at Shady Grove, because it kicks off at Shady Grove on Friday evening, and.
Do you now have a calendar of events?
We don't have.
At the last meeting, we, we didn't know what to come up.
No, we had a, so we had a meeting and she said they did not want, they were not going to advertise until three weeks prior.
Yeah, God forbid anybody would know that it was happening.
So, thank you, nobody, people don't know. I did post today on Vernon's Facebook page just to kind of, I put the link for the, for the website for the bicentennial, which I haven't been on my personal one to share it, I just put it on the city one so that we could get it out there today. And it has, you know, the county's list of events, but there's, there's not much detail. It says, you know, like details coming.
Can you send that to us?
I will, I'm going to tag you when I, when I share it from my page, I was going to tag you on it.
I mean, prior to three weeks before the event.
No, like tonight, when we get done.
Well, and the other thing is that it's, the, the whole county's coming for the parade.
That's what I'm saying, it's going to be a big parade.
Not if they don't know there's a parade.
Yeah.
I just read about it today.
Everybody, well, we've been doing a birthday parade in there, but it's not a lot, I think they're slow. I, I mean, I'm just being.
No.
No cool, because I keep saying, where's, nobody knows anything about this, and it's supposed to be a big affair.
Candace was saying you were.
I just hot, I just hijacked their website for the bicentennial today just to get the word out there, because I, three weeks since, people are planning spring festivals months ahead of time. I mean, this thing's been in the works for several years, but as far as advertising, I mean, they, they.
And it's the tourist development, they're supposed to be doing all of this, and it's just seem like it's just, there's nothing out there.
So this is in April?
Yes, April, yeah.
So we don't have to worry about spring break happening at the same time anyway?
There's just a lot going on.
So, one last thing, if everybody's through that conversation, I just heard at the end of the table, it reminded me too, where are we at, oh, a special meeting?
Michelle has not been able, she's.
I know.
She had some medical procedures and she's not been able, so we couldn't hold this special, y'all wanted her present, so we couldn't schedule it.
Okay.
And maybe at the next meeting we'll have more on that, about the bicentennial, meaning the Vegas committee is.
Also, if y'all are good with it, the next meeting, I'd like to go ahead and get photos of all the people who are no longer new to the commission, but, or to the council, but who are going to be reelected.
Yeah.
So, wear a clean shirt, or if, if you want to. I wasn't looking at you.
I think the last time you took any pictures was like three years ago.
It's been a while since you took a picture.
I've got, I've got half of you.
Yeah.
But if you want to go on the website and look at your picture, if you want to touch it up, we can do that.
I want to update my picture.
We've got it on though, so we need to.
Anybody else have anything?
What's your name?
You don't have a resume to a journal? Second?
Oh, Mr. Mase was on the list.
I'm sorry, I didn't know the list was.
I didn't, I seen it go down there.
Just do a quick, encourage the city to do a no mow march like last year. Don't, don't mow the, don't mow the rights away for the blooms, for the first plants to start coming out, and that way some of the bees and whatever else can come out. If you don't want to do it for the all, I, I'll do just mine on the realignment park up to the, and the right away up to the library. But I do notice the clover is coming out on 79, and I've got clover and red and white coming out along with dewberries, dewberries and some other stuff coming out in my little, my little park area. And then I can get it cut, then I can get it cut before the bicentennial.
No, the only issue is the margins, and then the next weekend is the festival.
We just mowed the square.
So, he, he mowed it last week or something?
Yeah. I was here Friday, I think.
So, that's the only concern, is them having enough time to get things done in that week.
They have to be at the end.
Yeah, okay, well, most, most likely. Largest percentage of, of lawn and everything. And I do, I do mine anyway and everything, since, since I guard, guard those crepes.
Yes, sir.
And I've got some wild stuff growing, wild and everything there.
And have my water, see limit.
Can I ask the council to have a special no sitting at this part?
All in favor of adjournment? Anybody, any adjournment?